The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox Cities Campus assists the City of Manassia with video recordings of city meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manassia issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608. Contact the city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting Order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision just as far.
And before we begin this evening, if we could have a moment of silence. Alderman Hammond?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted us to recognize the significance of Juneteenth. The Emancipation Proclamation was passed January 1st, 1863. But that incredible news took two and a half years to reach some in our country. And Juneteenth is a day of recognition to recognize the second Independence Day for so many in our country. And as a country, on June 17th, 2021, it was passed as a federal holiday. So I just ask that you all join me in a moment of silence for the significance of the state. Thank you.
If we could have a roll, please.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Eisenberg?
Here.
Alderman Sevigny?
Here.
Alderman Hammond?
Here.
Alderman Lewis?
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Yes.
Alderman Repella?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Item E is a public hearing. It is to rezone two portions of Heckerod Wetland Reserve to GU. Director Schrader, did you have any comments regarding this?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so just quickly, again, the Heckerod Wetland Reserve. So this is City of Manassia-owned property that is leased to Heckerod Wetland Reserve Incorporated. Several of these properties makes up the actual reservation out there. And these two properties, the main property and then the prairie property, which is to the west of the main nature center, closer to the public works facility, is, are zoned differently than the rest of it. So the rest of the Heckerod Wetland Reserve and this portion of the property is zoned GU governmental use. However, the two other properties are still zoned R1 single-family and I1 heavy industrial. So with that, they are proposing to construct a coneflower pavilion in the prairie location. Again, this is just a small amenity to add to the reservation itself. And with that, in past practice, it would require a special use permit to go through public hearing process, City Plant Commission, as well as common council approval for even minor modifications like this, in addition to the parks board per the lease agreement. With this, again, governmental use allowance, if it were to be passed tonight, would allow smaller additions such as this to be permitted by right, which would not trigger the special use process, but it still would have to go through any type of procedure that is identified within the lease agreement. So with that, again, staff is looking at this as city-owned property and a nature center and is recommending approval of ordinance 07-23, as well as the City Plant Commission.
With that, is there anyone who wishes to speak regarding this? And I don't think it, just wait a second, it'll flash and then it should come on after, once it stops flashing.
Flashing.
No, no, hit it.
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I just had some questions regarding this. My first question is, I'd like to know when the last time this lease agreement was reviewed. This is city-owned property, and I would think that we would want to be able to have input into what is built on any city-use property, whether it's Heckerod or the Marina down the street or the Historical Society. Because what this does is, the size, in the memo, it says the side setbacks and dimensions meet city standards. But in the code, it's kind of, it says there are no minimum lot area setbacks or with requirements and no lot coverage or height limitation. So it's kind of, you know, of course it meets it because there are no restrictions. I would, I just think that we would be better off in the long term having some kind of control over what is being built on city-owned property. Our parks are not zoned governmental use. They're still residential, R1. I looked at the zoning map. In fact, there's very few things that are designated as governmental use. So I ask that you consider this because I think in the long term, we would be better off having that additional insight and input. And if a special use permit is required, we would have that opportunity to extend it or reject it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak just on the rezoning? Seeing no one else, we will call the public hearing to a close and we'll move on to the reported department's staff, department head, staff, and consultants. And the first item on the agenda is the Fox Cities Regional Partnership Annual Update. And I believe that they had a PowerPoint. Oh, look at that. You're all set to go.
I promise you, we will go quickly through the PowerPoint because there's been a lot going on. So my name is Becky Bartosik. I'm the president and CEO of the Fox Cities Chamber and Regional Partnership.
Yep. Hi, and I'm Eric Broden. I'm the director of economic development for the chamber.
So we've had a really exciting past 12 months. Last year, we spent the first half of the year really looking at a way that we could help our community attract talent to the region. And, you know, we went to all of the resources that we could find nationwide. And we went to the board and said, we believe that talent is first looking for quality of life. And that is truly driven by small business success. I don't know too many people that are out there looking for a big box store and saying, boy, that's what's going to make me move to the area. So we worked with our board of directors and we came up with a very aggressive program called Connect Free. And on August 29th of last year, we were one of the first areas in the country to launch a free program that supports small businesses very aggressively. So how it actually works, if you are in any of the area that we service, which is two and a half counties, northern Winnebago, all of Odekamee, and all of Calumet County, if you have five or less or equivalent full-time employees, if you're a nonprofit that has 10 or less full-time employees, or if you are a freestanding restaurant, we are giving you all of these tremendous resources for free to help you grow. Really, it's an effort to wrap our arms around these businesses and help them get to the next level. So some of the things that we launched with Connect Free were a partnership with Google, where Google is actually flying into our region and meeting with our small businesses and providing just great training seminars that people absolutely love. We also struck a partnership with SBDC, which is part of the UW system, as well as Fox Valley Tech and SCORE, to provide small business consulting for free at the chamber. We also have SBDC doing free small business consulting at the chamber for eight hours every Wednesday as a new resource of the regional partnership. So what happened? What was the result? We launched this on August 29th, and I'm very pleased to tell you that today, we are providing small business free support to almost 400 new businesses in this area. And about 65 of those are right here in northern Winnebago. I can tell you, we did, about a month after we launched it, we were asked to present it at the State of Wisconsin as a new best practice to watch. The following month, we were asked to present it in Washington DC as a national best practice. And as of last month, I actually received a document that we're currently being watched as a national best practice to see the success that happens with it. So it's been a very, very interesting year trying to help all of these small businesses get to the next level. So it's been very exciting. The next thing that went on, we decided, you know what? We need to keep all of our talent here. We have, what, two jobs or three jobs for every job seeker? And we knew that we needed to network our small business professionals. So at that point, we decided any charge that we previously had for Pulse Young Professionals Network would now be free as well. So we started the year with about 700 or 70 people that were part of that program, and now we're almost at 500. And that really helps develop them professionally, as well as creating a network here in the area. Some of the programs that were offered for them are like Dale Carnegie Free of Charge. That was held every month for a nine-month period. So there's been a lot going on just in those two areas, and there's about 900 new people that we are touching free of charge and helping support that we weren't until a year ago. So Eric, I'll let you talk about talent attraction here.
Yeah, so we all know that's still a major, major issue for a lot of employers is talent attraction and retention. So we've got several programs and events that are surrounded just on those topics. So Future Fox Cities Career Expo, that is our event held at the Expo Center down in Appleton. We had over 2,000 students this year attend, and they're meeting with all of our area businesses, learning more about what opportunities exist for them right here in the Fox Cities. We're touching eighth-grade students all the way up through seniors. And the goal is to make sure that these kids all know that there are great careers for them right here. They don't have to go somewhere else to find a great job. Fox Cities Days, this is a talent attraction campaign we do at universities. Michigan Tech, we go down to Platteville. This year, we also went down to Concordia for the healthcare workers down there, and then also UW Oshkosh. So this is again a traveling program, and we are bringing employers to those campuses. We're usually the first visits to the campuses for employers, but it's been a great success also. Smart Girls Rock, this is geared towards the high school girls who are looking at STEM careers. So we bring in 12 employers from our region that all focus in these areas, and we also bring in, ask them to bring in female mentors to help train these kids and teach them for, they get them for about 20 minutes, show them what kind of careers could exist in the STEM fields. So you've got Miller Electric there, teaching kids how to weld. And that's just, it's just cool things to see. We were Bolt Construction, and these girls are operating cranes. So just really cool things. If you ever get a chance to come out there, we welcome you to come join us.
Smart Girls Rock, I have to tell you, the organic media coverage covering just that event alone was $4.4 million, and it was picked up in 48 states. There was that much interest in it. And I'll be honest, we actually turned away the governor from visiting because we said, no, the focus needs to be on the kids.
Pretty neat. Another program of ours that's been really gaining in popularity is our Employee Friendly Workplace Certification Program. This is where we like to highlight the major employers in our area that are going out and really putting their employees first, both from a benefit standpoint and a culture standpoint. We started the year with 12 certified, and we've had five more this year, another one that's going to get announced next week. So this program just keeps growing in popularity. And then, of course, the BRE visits, which is Business Retention and Expansion. That's where we try to get in front of as many businesses as we can in our region, just to kind of ask questions about how things are going, what's business like for you, and how can we help provide you with resources? And it's either SBDC or it's programs through the state like WEDC. A lot of times, it's, if we're in Manassia, we're bringing Sam along, inviting him to come with us to these meetings. So he gets to hear firsthand too from the City of Manassia businesses what they're experiencing. And then, of course, we have free job postings and business attraction projects that we work on as well. So we hit on a few of these things on the next page here Becky did with the Grow with Google, Dale Carnegie. Fox Valley Tech is also hosting seminars that we are helping coordinate. And she mentioned the small business consulting. Economic Outlook Lunch, if any of you guys have been to that before, it's a great event. I know Becky, you probably are always itching to talk about this one.
We fly in an economist that is considered one of the best in the world, and his name is Elliot Eisenberg. And I'll be honest with you, from the minute he gets up to speak until the minute he sits down, I stop breathing because he is funnier than I'll get out. He takes something that's very, very complicated and makes it very simple, and he makes it fun for everybody, which means it's pretty cutting-edge. But he does do a great job of educating our community on trends that are coming locally, nationally, and an international perspective so that they can forecast better for their businesses and prepare for the future.
All right. Livability. This is a media company that, if you guys have seen those lists that come out every year, the top 100 best places to live, Livability is the company behind those lists. And we have actually partnered with them, and we're going to be coming out with our own publication so that besides the lists that they do online, they actually do printed publications. On the screen, you see an example of one they did for Nashville. Ours is going to say Fox Cities Region, and it's going to highlight our area from an economic development perspective. So we're going to list demographics, we're going to highlight the school systems, some of the great things that make this place unique. And that'll be coming out hopefully in August. I know the date's been pushed by Livability, had a little turnover here and there, so we've got pushed by about a month and a half here, but we're hoping for August. Besides the physical copies, we're also going to have digital versions available, which will be available for you guys to share or use however you'd like.
So Nashville's picture looks cool, but we actually saw the cover picture for the Fox Cities version, and it's even better than that. It's actually an aerial picture of ATW, and I believe it says the Fox Cities Region Economy is soaring. It looks amazing. You will definitely be impressed. So we won't go through line by line on this one, but as you can see, there's a tremendous amount of work that's going on behind the scenes, just, you know, advocating on behalf of our community. We have people that have been advocating on behalf of the research and development opportunities at the state level. We have been, you know, we were pushing as well to try to get the engineering school at the UW system. We actually were in support of the funding to help bring the NFL draft to this area before the Green Bay Chamber even knew about it. So we were, we were definitely leading the way there. So as you can see, we're just trying to, and most importantly, we're advocating on trying to get increased revenue for local governments. We know how thin budgets are spread here. And with that being said, this is just scratching the surface of everything that is going on. It has been an amazing year. It's been really exciting to see how we are able to lead the way, not only here in the state, but nationally with some of the best practices that we're doing, and helping small businesses get to the next level. But all of that is only possible because of the support of our municipalities and our private companies here in this region. So we just wanted to thank you for that again, and answering questions you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. With your small business, reach out to different businesses, and you said there were 60 within Winnebago County. We don't have like a downtown development group for businesses and stuff. But there are four new businesses that are going to open. Hopefully, one's opening at the end of June, and I'm not sure when the other three. Do you know off the top of your head if any new businesses in Manassia have contacted you?
Well, there's definitely Manassia businesses in that 60 of the 400. So, but if you happen to know who those people are, we can definitely reach out to them and make sure that they're getting the resources.
Okay, Sam.
We actually even have little business cards that have a QR code on them. So they, all they need to do is scan the QR code, and everything's there, and they can get signed up right away.
Anyone else? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Talent attraction and livability, I think, go hand in hand. You have, you provided great examples of advocacy, the way your organization advocates for issues. If we don't have places for people to live, it's really hard to get people to come here. So that's a primary challenge that comes to mind. So beyond just advocacy, could you provide examples of how you form coalitions with other organizations to move the needle on issues that are really important to livability, talent attraction, community, and economic development?
Absolutely. I mean, we realize that, number one, there are so many big issues that need to be addressed, like childcare and affordable housing, for example, that we are careful to not duplicate services and to partner whenever possible. After all, you know, we can't boil the ocean, so let's take on the pieces that we can. We partner very closely with all of our municipal economic development folks. We partner with the downtown organizations, as you mentioned, like Future NINA, ADI. We partner with WEDC.
New North?
New North extensively, actually sit on the New North Board, as well as I am appointed to the Governor's Council on Workforce Investment. So we are down there trying to advocate on those issues and be a fourth, be one of the front and center voices trying to make a difference. I know that Jen Sunstrom with the Realtors Association was in recently, asking the chamber to sign up in support of some very cutting-edge things that the Realtors Association will be pushing forward in the next couple of months, trying to take on that issue exactly. And we didn't hesitate. Before they left, we said, whatever you need, the chamber will be there to help.
Do you have any examples of an active role in partnering with those organizations, taking a really active role beyond advocacy, working collaboratively with one or two organizations to really address an issue like childcare affordability and availability, or the need for affordable housing? So really working together to move the needle, to make progress on those issues beyond just advocacy? So you want to touch this on up?
Yeah, so we actually were awarded, we're actually partnering with the Childcare Resource and Referral in our area here to, with a Dream Up Grant through the state that we were awarded. So we actually have our first, we just found out we were awarded this and have our first meeting on it coming up. So we don't have our active roles there, but we are going to be playing an active part in that and helping to get more money into the childcare system and help us, I believe we're targeting subsidizing some of the salaries for childcare workers, but that's one thing that we're doing coming up.
Okay. And speaking, and just exploring that issue a little bit further, because I worked in childcare for a bit. So the affordability is one thing, but the availability and staff and training and all of it, because there aren't enough people to work in the industry.
Right.
So are you addressing all of those issues collectively?
Our grant's going to touch on all of those to the extent of which I won't be able to tell you until, we haven't even had our first meeting on it yet as a group because there's several entities involved that are working together on this. But I'd be happy to give you guys updates once we kind of have that direction and know a little bit better where we're headed.
Thank you. There's three huge areas. We know talent attraction is huge, and that's, that's been a large focus of ours, and making sure that we retain our talent. Childcare, as well as affordable housing, we're, we're not as deeply involved in us directly moving the needle, but we do partner and support the regional effort in any way that we can, with the resources that we have.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much for coming tonight. Moving on, we have the Minutes and Communications this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny? Oops, Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like first to receive Minutes A through I and Communications J through M.
So motion in a second? Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I wanted to put the chief on the spot. Does he have a mic?
Police chief.
Police chief. Woo, look at the fire chief sweat over there.
You're off the hook.
I just thought that because of the communication you had in here about abandoned properties and with the upcoming date, you might want to, for the cameras, announce some of that and what's happening.
Sure. So annually, we look at the property which we receive, abandoned property, or property that we take in that we look to either dispose of or look to auction off. And we use that availability in terms of an auction to try to recoup some of the costs for the city for housing those items. So this year, similarly to last year, our property and evidence custodian worked to identify the auctioneer that we'll be using for 2023. So Hanson &amp; Young Auction Group was selected as the auctioneer for 2023, and starting June 23rd, there will be an online auction through Hanson &amp; Young. You can access it through their online portal, where we'll be auctioning off approximately 30 bicycles, some camera equipment, and some other miscellaneous equipment.
And those dates?
It begins June 23rd, and then I think they typically last about a month. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item G is public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment? Seeing.
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Just a few items. I've always been critical of the Fox Cities Regional Partnership as it relates to the City of Manassia, because I've yet to see the bang for our buck. In the presentation, Manassia was named twice, or spoken twice. And I'm curious as to when they actually did come into Manassia, because they said they would grab Sam along for employee, employment retention, because I've seen several businesses leave the city, and they were not aware of the businesses coming into our city. And I've always thought that, I've always tried to get our share of dollars eliminated from the budget because it's always focused on Appleton, always on Appleton. So I also wanted to comment on, you're going to be going into closed session regarding property, well, it says 90 Broad Street, but it's actually three parcels for the negotiating and the purchase price. Because it's closed session and there's no memo, I have no idea if this is for development, future development of condominiums, if this is for parkland along the locks, if there's what the intent is or what the purchase price is. All I can tell you is that we, we keep taking waterfront property off the tax rolls, and I'm very concerned about that. You did it just the last meeting. The bridge took off waterfront property. And we talk about trying to have affordable housing. And just to kind of piggyback on what Alderman Nichols said, the common person thinks of affordable housing as, you know, a house you can afford, when in reality, there is a definition, and what you're doing is talking about low-income housing. And that's something that no one seems to want in their back door. And Manassia, with our medium And Manassas, with our medium value of homes, we are right where we need to be, honestly. And to be promoting more low-income housing or more rental property when, I think District 2 is about 72% rental now, overall, the city is at 50% rental, and that's not including what is now going on downtown. I would be very leery. The problem that we're having is attracting people to live here and be part of our community, part of our schools, while we're having our transient populations. My neighbor announced to me today they sold their home, but not to a family, for an Airbnb. So that's what's coming of our, your place on the water. They're being overpriced, because they're people from Illinois, and speculators and investors are coming, buying up the property, raising the values superficially, that no one else is going to be able to afford living here. And that's what we need to focus on. I'm just very frustrated with the city. If community development would have done their job, I wouldn't have lost the last couple neighbors I've had. And these are people that are invested in our downtown. The one that recently sold had the coffee shop. They bought a blighted piece of property, the old Don's Family Bakery, converted it into a coffee shop, renovated the home that they're living in. Prior to that, the people to the east of me bought a blighted property downtown, renovated it into one of the nicest children's stores in the state. And because of the neighborhood, in both circumstances, they left. The only reason I'm here is because my husband is devoted to Manassas. I would be gone. And something needs to be done, or you'll have a lawsuit on your hands. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to have items removed from the consent agenda?
Do you have something you need to change?
Alderman Savick.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess one of the council members has to make some changes to the minutes, so we're going to go through everything here. So at this time, I'd like for us to approve the special joint common council meeting that we had with the Water and Lake Commission on 6/5/23.
Is there, there's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries.
The next item, Mayor, is the common council minutes that was on also the same date of 6/5/23.
So motion in a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I did talk to the clerk briefly before the meeting under Section L for appointments. There was a motion to reappoint myself to the redevelopment authority, and I did request to abstain from that vote, and I would like that recorded in the minutes, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
So the minutes as corrected stand. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item three. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the 2023 and 2024 July 4th fireworks contract with Spielbauer Fireworks in the amount of $37,000 for each year.
So motion in a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Savick.
The additional money, what are we looking at?
It's about $7,000. It depends on how much fundraising we have, but about, it's $7,000 higher than last year. The original quote to do the same exact show as last year was $45,000. We have not had a price increase for three years, and that's why it was such a significant price increase.
So we're going to be looking for some fundraising then?
We should have enough money from things, especially interest, as Jennifer has told us, but we're going to run that account dry soon if we keep adding things to it. There should be plenty from additional interest income that we made this year on our investments that was not budgeted.
Thank you.
If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
So a motion for item four. Alderman Savick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to take the Board of Public Works' recommendation to award contract unit 2023-04 for the crack sealing program, and this is through various city streets to Farner Asphalt Sealer LLC at $58,125.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
So a motion for item five. Alderman Savick.
Again, this is recommended by the Board of Public Works to award contract number 2023-05, street construction rehabilitation. This is the Third Street and Community Way to Northeast Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $593,648.75.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Here's a motion for item six. Alderman Savick.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to award contract unit MCM0002-09-2200340. This is the Washington Street Tower Piping and Painting Repair to Viking Painting LLC in the amount of $195,216.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item seven? Alderman Savick.
This is a payment to Don Hipison Sons and Construction, Inc., MCM09-2200335, sanitary sewer and water main reconstruction in the amount of $183,295.71. This will be the third payment.
There is a second. So motion in a second by Alderman Repella. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we have a motion for item eight? Alderman Savick.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the public and those in the gallery that are wondering, geez, don't these folks talk about anything? But these were handled in committee and discussed thoroughly, and now are coming before the common council for formal recommendation. Therefore, then, at this time, Mayor, we are on number eight.
Yes.
And that would be for the street use application, and then that is a common occurrence in the Fox Cities, which is the Community First Fox Cities Marathon, Sunday, September 17th. And that will be between 7:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And this is a Community First Fox Cities Marathon event.
There is a motion in a second. Tom? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, I don't need a roll call. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item, do we have a motion for item nine? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move to council the recommendation or the approval of the certified survey map as proposed, consolidated 904 Whisper Falls Court, parcel number 701700-76, and Outlot 7, replot of Lake Villa, Park Lake Villa, parcel number 701775-97, with the following condition: Under the common council approval signature block, the board of supervisors is changed to the common council.
Is there a second? So a motion in a second by Alderman Eisenach. Any discussion? Do you have discussion? No. Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item J is action items. The first is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of June 2nd through June 15th, 2023, in the amount of $228,662.89.
Is there a second? So motion in a second by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item two is a liquor license for Dreams Venture, Dreams Venue and Events LLC. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the Class B and Class B liquor license for Dreams Venue and Events LLC, Doing Business as Dreams, for 325 Broad Street, Manassas for the remainder of the 2022 through 23 licensing year.
Is there a second? So motion in a second by Alderman Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Can you redo it?
Oops.
He's doing so good. Motion carries eight zero, and thank you.
Item three is a liquor license renewal application. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the renewal application of Rusted Roost, Doing Business as Rusted Roost Restaurant and Bar at 192 Main Street for the 2023 through 24 licensing year.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Savick.
Can you explain why we call it a renewal?
This is the Rusted Roost, so they literally just had their license approved last meeting, and in order to continue their licensing, we needed to have it renewed for this specific council meeting.
Any, Alderman Grady.
Do we know when they're opening?
She told me, yeah, June 29th or 30th.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero. Looks like everyone's really excited.
Item four is the beverage operators' license applications. We have two that have been deferred. I would assume that you'd want to take them up separately. Alderman Nichols.
Yes, thank you. Before I make a motion for the, the first applicant listed on our agenda, I would like to ask the city attorney a question. In the past, we've had applications come through where there may have been offenses or there were convictions a number of years ago, and it has always been consistently, we have always been consistently advised that after a certain number of years, things can be, the, the person has a chance to, to start over essentially. So could you address that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Alderman Nichols. In this situation as well, the felony conviction is not directly or substantially related, as our guidelines refer to, to the offense for which the applicant applies, license, excuse me, for which the applicant applies. Additionally, I did want to point out no other felony level or convictions or infractions since that 1987 conviction. Again, currently holding an alcohol operator's license in the city of Appleton. It would be my opinion that approval would be not contrary to the city of Manassas' policy. You are correct, though state statute does indicate that felony conviction language. I think that what really matters here is the substantially related piece, along with that substantial amount of time that it's been since that 1987 conviction. There is no specific number of years for, for you all to consider, just, I think, a totality of circumstances here, and really that piece of substantially related.
Thank you very much. With that, I'll move to approve the beverage operators' license for Stephen Lonsway for the 2023 through 2025 licensing period.
Is there a second? So motion in a second by Alderman Savick. Do you have discussion as well?
Sure. And I'm doing this for the public because the conviction was in 1987. Where are you born?
1987.
Okay, so some of the people here weren't even born, so, you know, it was a long time ago. And also too, what the city attorney stated is that it was not really an alcohol-related issue at that time. So I always look at that, and therefore, I think we should approve this.
Alderman Eisenach? Whoops, I had to press that.
I would like to abstain from voting because I hold a liquor license, please.
Alderman Grady.
Thank you. I guess my question's for the attorney also. Do you want to look at this guidelines and operation license, and if it's over 20 years, it's not even considered? Or is there a certain, like a felony or something like that, it has to be considered? I mean, I don't know. That's just my question.
Sure. So the current. Thank you. So currently, the guidelines do have language that despite, in a sense, despite the conviction, you know, if it isn't substantially related. So I think that that gets us out of the, or allows us to approve for this specific reason, though it still allows council the opportunity to consider that offense if it is directly related. We may have an individual with an OWI conviction from a certain number of years ago, and if that is a basis for which council may wish to rely on to deny, then that could be used in that situation. I think now, as the guidelines are written, it does allow for that discretion for council, but it also does allow for council to apply that first guideline if necessary.
So seeing no further discussion, if we could have, we had a motion, not motion in a second by Alderman Savick, right? If we could have a roll call vote then, please. I don't know if anyone wishes to make a motion or hear from the attorney or chief. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Before making a motion on our second applicant this evening that is being deferred, I would like to ask Chief Thorne to provide a brief history regarding this application.
Yes, thank you, Alderman Nichols. This applicant came before council December 20th, 2021, and at that point, the police department's stance was we had recommended a denial based on guideline four, that the gentleman had provided some inaccurate information at that point. The council had approved that recommendation for denial, and now coming before us this evening is the same applicant again. Noteworthy for this gentleman is March 2nd, 2022, he also received a similar municipal level violation for pre-cure cell to an underage person's second offense. Given the discussions that were involved with the last council meeting, we felt it pertinent to bring this item forward again, just to make sure that we were on the same page with providing the deferral.
So if I'm understanding correctly, this person was before the council on December, in December of 2021, with offenses for selling alcohol to underage persons, first offense, that would have been their first offense, and they have since received another citation for selling to an underage person in March of 2022.
Yes, that's correct. Specific, I guess, to the March violation, one of our underage auxiliary officers who was assisting in conducting licensing and underage alcohol violation checks was served alcohol by this applicant. When we had a discussion, or officer had a discussion with him, he mentioned that the reasoning why he had served the alcohol was because when he, when it gets busy, he finds it hard to check licenses, and he sometimes does not check licenses at all, so.
All right, thank you for that. Seeing as this applicant has a history of selling to underage persons in the city of Manasha, I move to deny the beverage operators license application for Ashish Padul for the 2023 through 2025 licensing period.
So a motion and a second, Mr., I don't know if she has your name correct, Padul. If you'd like to speak before the council, you're welcome to do that. Is it this one? There we go.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I did that mistake, but my intention is never want to sell alcohol in minor, you know, just when I started with there, just I trying to guess, is the problem is that, you know, just I feel little accurate. When I asked the ID, you know, some people use slang word, and problem is that. Then after I did that mistake, then I go to Manasha Police Cheer Program, then I learned from over there also, and now if they don't have ID, I refuse to sell, and I need ID anyway. I did now that. Like before, you know, I trying to guess, guess the A's, you know, people become younger, then I not ask ID, only that reason. Now, I go to Manasha Cheer Program, then I learned from over there also. So if you want to give me chance, you know, I know that serious danger, I don't want to mistake, that big mistake. So, yeah, I also heard news from Farinto Lake, you know, just like people sell alcohol and they die, and they die for like a ten year. Now I'm serious about that case, and...
So the attorney said that he took the Cheers program through the PD? I don't know if you wanted, you want to share with us what that is, Nick?
I would have to check the exact dates of attendance for the applicant. However, it's an educational-based program for applicants who have had issues with violations serving underage, and by attendance at these programs, the hope is that they are given some education to prevent violations similar to that in the future.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. You were here in December of 2021.
Yes.
With already having been cited for selling to an underage, and you were given another chance then, and now you have sold to another underage person. And so I see a pattern, and that is why I have made a motion to deny your license. And I encourage my fellow council members to uphold that motion. Thank you.
Did you have any other comments?
Just, you know, before mine is not too much good, and people come my stores, I feel little accurate, and just when I ask ID, you know, some people, now also same problem, but if they don't want to show me ID, then I directly refuse to sell them. But now I have confident to, what is my job, what I do for like community, you know, I'm confident now. So if someone coming, then I never, never did that mistake. I don't want to do that mistake, so.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
I don't think I see any other, oh, Alderman Repella has...
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry.
Ashish. Yes, sir. You've had two violations. We appreciate you, you know, trying to take the Cheers program, trying to get better. Just hope that, you know, we need to see at least a year or two that you don't have another violation. So I think you'll work on that, because you've had two almost within nine months. That is like a year or so, yeah. Yeah, so try to get a year under your belt without getting arrested. So, all right? So that's it, but thank you.
So seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries to deny the license, seven zero one abstention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Item L is ordinances and resolutions. The first is ordinance five. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion for 0523, An Ordinance to amend Title II, Government and Administration, Chapter Two, Section Two dash two dash nine E, salaries for the mayor, effective 2024 of $80,000.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Discussion? Alderman Repella?
Well, thank you, but I'd like to make a motion to delay this until the next council meeting.
So you want to...
Postpone.
Postpone?
Yes.
Reason?
Just to be able to gather some more information as far as the other cities and how they determine pay raises for the mayor.
So there's a motion to postpone. We would need a second and then a vote in order to do that. Is there a second?
I'll second.
So a motion and a second by Alderman Sevigny. Eddie, I don't know if this is debatable. I always forget. Anyhow, is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call, and this would postpone this item till July 17th. If we could have a roll call vote. The clerk is still typing. Just on postponement.
Motion denied. Four, three.
Five, three.
Oh, motion failed, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, so I forget if there was a motion on the floor or not at this point. Okay, so there's a motion, oh, by the Graddys. And a second. Discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I did find some time to do a little bit of research on this topic, and I consulted first with Alderman Grady about using the NINA's population and dividing it into, taking the population and dividing it, the salary dividing it by the population, and so 81,000 in their population is 26,000. It's a long ride, so rest a little bit. 26,000. So when you break that down, the multiplier is 3.05. So if Manasha would take their salary, or take their population of 18,000 and multiply it times the same multiplier that NINA used, Manasha's mayor would be paid $55,767. That's first possibility. So then I've taken Ted's formula, and for the other cities, Appleton is paid $106,000, but they have 75,000 people in the city, and that multiplier comes out to 1.4. Pay attention to these multipliers. Manitowoc has 75,000, or I should say, they pay the mayor 75,000, but they got 34,000 people in their city. Their multiplier is 2.1. NINA, I did that, that's 3.5. Manasha with a $70,000 payroll into 18,268 people, the multiplier is 3.8. Wisconsin Rapids, they pay their mayor $81,000, and their multiplier, and they have 18,000 people, their multiplier is 4.2. Kaquana is the outlier. They pay their mayor $90,000, and they have 17,000 people, and their multiplier is 5.3. That means every person in their city pays $5 that year to pay for the mayor's salary. So in order to get a fair multiplier, I took those six cities, 1.4, 2.1, 3.05, 3.8, 4.2, and 5.3, divided it by six, comes out to 3.34. So that means that Manasha's salary could possibly be $61,079. Okay, so then, that's two ways of determining the pay. Then I took the fire department, which Kevin is part of, the chief, and added the two, they go on a 60/40 basis. So I took the NINA's pay and the Manasha's pay, 81,000 and 70,000, 81,000 and 70,000 comes up to 151,000. And I did that times six and times four. That would make the NINA's, NINA's mayor's salary of 90,000 and the Manasha's mayor's salary of 60,000. So again, we haven't even touched the 70,000 yet. So you can see 55, 61, and 60,000, well below the 70,000 that we currently pay our mayor. I've also discussed this with numerous people in my district, and a 14% pay raise would be unheard of in today's world. I don't care where you work. I mean, maybe Aaron Rodgers would get a 14% pay raise, but not any city employees. After four years, Manasha's salary, if we continue on this road, which Alderman Grady has figured out, 86,000 would be towards the top of all the mayor's salaries. I called over to Appleton. Appleton, since 1990, or since 2015, they started at 94,000 and they're up to 106,000. They've gone up 1.5% every year. In the article that I researched, their mayor's salary was based on three things: per capita, spending, general fund budget, and population. So then I looked at NINA, I called over to NINA. Dean Crawford, who was mayor at NINA for many years, his last four years were at $79,250. When he stopped running for mayor, he proposed a 3% pay raise. So the Alderman, Alderman Jane Lang is now the mayor, and she will get 81,670 for each of her four, first four years, with no pay raises included. So she'll be getting 81,000. So now Manasha, if we say it starts at 80, and we want to give him a, give the mayor, or the new mayor, or the current mayor, whoever's our mayor next, a 2.5 pay raise every year, he's going to jump from 80, which he starts next year, to 82, to 84, into 86,000. He'll be paid more than NINA. And some comparisons of the city. NINA has a $27 million general fund balance. Manasha only has $20 million. NINA has 230 employees. Manasha roughly has 130. Also, NINA has a very thriving downtown. Question to ponder: Will our new mayor with 80,000, is that going to improve our city, our downtown, given that we may have a rookie mayor? Also, high salary does not guarantee high performance, or just as a low salary doesn't guarantee low performance. They can be still performing very high if they're given a low salary. So I'm proposing $75,000 salary with a 2.5 raise each year. That's it. I just think 14% pay raise is way too much at the get-go, and we possibly have, one other thing we also have, there might be two or three Aldermen up here that are running for mayor next year, and of course, if they can get $100,000 salary, they got the votes. So they could get that $100,000 salary if they wanted to, but they're going to stop at 80, I'm hoping. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Alderman Repella, it's not my formula to came up with the $80,000 based on people, and that's, so don't say that was, but you and I talked about that, per capita, and blah, blah, blah. So I understand that. But in the years from 2008 to 2020, there was no salary increase for our mayor. Alderman Sevigny put in a salary increase a couple of years ago. Thank heavens for that, because it was, I don't know, 60 some thousand dollars. I'm not looking at Mayor Merkis as the person, I'm looking at the position as a whole. And if we want good candidates and good people, you got to pay, you got to pay some money. And I think 80 is, even 75 is not too bad, but 80 is a good number that we came across. So the multiple of that, and you can look at per capita versus people and what they're getting paid. Okay, let's look at the mayor of New York. There's 11 million people living in that city.
But his multiplier might be serious.
Wait, wait, I'm not done. You can put your mic on if you want to talk. But you got to not base it on that. I understand where you're coming from, but it's still a job as a whole, just as the police chief, or excuse me, the fire chief, 64...
chief, or excuse me, the fire chief, 60-40 split, that's based on whatever it is, but they still, we could have two chiefs in NINA and Manasha, but we went with one to save some money, to do some stuff. So I don't know what is the best formula. Maybe postponement, looking at other things could have been a good idea, but we got to put this to rest. And it passed in the Personnel Committee last time. So I'm going to stick to the 80,000 with the 2.5% increase, and let's just see what happens. But I'm happy with where that salary's been set.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate something I had mentioned at the meeting prior, that we were discussing this pay raise, which is specifically about the formula with the, that the Joint Finance Committee for the Fire Department uses, doesn't make a whole lot of sense in this context, because it really, that has to do with service area, and to say that the Manasha mayor is only doing 40% of the work that the NINA mayor is, is kind of ridiculous. I'd also, I mean, it's my opinion, however, I do believe that paying the mayor based off of population makes probably about as much sense as paying the school district based off of per pupil amount, which is not a lot. So I just, I think that $80,000 is probably not even, I would find it difficult to be doing everything that our mayor currently does for that amount of money per year. So I think that we, it is a comfortable number, and we should approve the budget increase as we have discussed.
Alderman Izenek.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say this is a hard one, because I didn't get all the information that I wanted to get either. I know there's social media posts out there, and I hate to bring that up, but there is not a lot of facts in the social media posts. And it's saying that it's specifically for you, Mayor Murkis, not knowing that an election is coming up and other people could run, and it wouldn't be specifically for you, it could be for anybody. I've gotten quite a few emails from my district, and unfortunately, a lot of them are against this raise. And since I don't have all the facts that I wanted to gather, I'm going to be voting no for my people in my district. So I just wanted to explain why I was voting, not just because of this mayor, of next mayor, or anything like that. So, thank you.
Are there any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, we have a motion on the floor, and we could take a roll call vote, please.
There's a tie vote, four, four, so that would mean.
That means the mayor has to do this. I will be voting for, because, whoops. How come it doesn't work? Well, I will be voting in favor. There has not been, there's been a 0.7% increase in the mayor's salary since, each year since 2003. If we do want quality people running for the position, we do have to have a reasonable salary. All of the department heads, I believe, are making that much, or very close to that much. If we had an administrator, we'd be paying about twice what the current salary is. So I will vote in favor as well to break the tie. And I'll vote in favor of the next one to break the tie, too, if that comes up with Alderman. You have the ability to do that.
Motion carries five, four.
You do have the motion, the ability to change the salary to anything you would like, Alderman Repella. Item two is ordinance six. Alderman Groudi.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to approve the motion of 0623 and an ordinance amending Title II, Government Administered, Chapter Two, Section 229b, salaries for their older persons as introduced in the packet.
Is there a second? It's a motion, Alderman Izenek? Okay. It's like, who was that down there? There's a motion, a second, discussion. I didn't know if it was you or Alderman Nichols. Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven, one.
I can't vote on this one? Being that there's not a tie, I cannot do that. Item three is ordinance seven regarding Heckerod Wetland Reserve, and Director Schrader did say there was something he wanted to add. I forget what it was.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, just a point of clarification. So again, when we're looking at the special use process, a special use, a park within R1 residential district is specifically called out as requiring that special use process. So that does trigger into that methodology or that process that we would look at approving a structure like that. In the I-1 heavy industrial, it is a bit up in the air exactly how this would be viewed. It's not listed as a permitted use or a special use, per se. We would likely view it as a portion of the code that notes accessory buildings are used as customary with, or incidental to the principal use, are permitted unless otherwise excluded. So again, there's already discrepancy between just the two zoning classifications, and rezoning all these to GU government use amongst all the Heckerod properties out there on south of the street there would be beneficial in our staff review. Thank you.
So I don't know who wants to make the motion. Looks like Alderman Groudi got the button first.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I recommend to council the approval of ordinance 0723, an ordinance rezoning the portions of Heckerod Wetland Reserve to, as presented to GU, the government use district located at 1305 Plank Road, parcel number 5-00924-00, to I-1 Heavy Industrial District, to GU governmental use district, and parcel number 5-00516-00, to R1 Single Family Residential District, Residence District, to GU governmental use district.
It's a long one.
I know.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion, a second, by Alderman Ted Groudi. Discussion, did you have any discussion, Tom? Oh, no, sorry. Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you. Same. So there were some questions raised about permits and special use and those types of issues, which I tend to agree. Can you address that a little bit as far as us changing it to GU? I believe a lot of the questions were more in regards to the actual lease agreement. So perhaps I could pass this over to Attorney Struve to kind of touch base on that process in the lease agreement.
Thank you. I did have a chance to review our lease agreement with Heckerod Wetland Reserve. That most recent document was executed May 16th of 2005. It's effective through the 17th of May 2005 through January 1st, 2035. There is a provision there which indicates that Heckerod has full authority to construct any buildings on the premises. And all buildings shall be in harmony with the character of the wetland reserve and shall be necessarily, necessary, excuse me, only for education, charity, or scientific purposes, or for the maintenance of the reserve, as the board shall determine. And that would be Heckerod's board. So back in 2005, it appears as though the city agreed to give them full authority to construct the buildings, any building. However, they would still be required pursuant to Provision 10, they would still be required to seek the board's acceptance for insurance purposes. So we did have an opportunity to reach out to our property.
And when you say board, are you, which board are you referencing? Heckerod Board or the?
Heckerod Board.
Okay.
Except, the city would have to accept the building for insurance purposes, so the common council.
Correct. So the approval of the building would be the Heckerod Board, excuse me, to ensure that it is in harmony with the character of the wetland reserve and shall be necessary only for education, charity, or scientific purposes, excuse me, or for the maintenance of the reserve, as the board, as Heckerod's board shall determine. So that piece, that approval piece, is not common council. We agreed to give that to Heckerod's board. This common council's approval process would be for insurance purposes, to accept that building and allow us to add it essentially to our municipal property insurance.
And we get reimbursed? Or how is that paid? If we add it, how is that paid?
It depends on the replacement value of the structure or the building. I do have a, to give you an idea, our current rate is .0706, and for each $100 value. So if the structure is worth $10,000, the replacement value, the rate calculation for $7.06, excuse me, the rate calculation would be 10,000 divided by 100 times that .0706. I feel like Alderman.
I was going to say, you sounded like a granny.
So to ensure a $10,000 structure, we would be adding $7.06 onto our premium. The deductible for a $50,000 structure would be $5,000, and that premium addition would be $35.30, just to give you some perspective there.
So I think what he's asking though is who pays it? And it's part of the lease agreement, that they build and operate the facility, we pay the insurance as the city.
Yeah. That's pretty generous.
And then insurance did get used for a hailstorm. I don't know, how long ago was that, Ted? Like 10 years ago? Okay. So we did make it pretty well on that hailstorm, getting a new roof on that building and a few other things in the city. Other questions on the ordinance? Seeing no other questions, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for item four, which is Resolution 17? No? Thanks for coming, Kelsey. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve Resolution 1723, a resolution approving a 2023 general fund budget adjustment for the purpose of funding NINA-Manasha fire rescue budget deficit for the 2022 fiscal year.
Is there a second? It's a motion, a second, by Alderman Sevigny. Any discussion? Alderman Sevigny.
Yeah, I thought we had done this already.
It went through committee last.
Yeah. That's where I'm getting confused, because I think we talked about it in our NINA-Manasha fire rescue, as though we did it. So, all right.
Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Do we have a motion for item five, which is Resolution 18? I was trying to turn off the mic and it didn't work. Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve, my goodness. Resolution R1823, which is basically, this resolution acknowledges review of the City of Manasha's 2022 compliance with Maintenance Annual Report under the Wisconsin Administration Code RN208.
Is there a second? It's a motion, a second, by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item M is appointments. There are four this evening. Is there, we could probably take one and two together if you wanted, since they're both. Alderman Sevigny.
So Mayor, I will make a motion for both, if that's okay with the council. One for Kevin Kubiak and one for.
McKeon.
McKeon. To the NINA-Manasha Joint Fire Commission. The first one for Ken is from 6/1923 to 5/1 of '26, and the dates are the same.
It's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have appointment for, a motion for item three?
That's an easy one. Mayor, I'll move for your appointment of Debbie Gallozzi to the Board of Review as an alternate.
Did you pronounce that right?
I hope so.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second, by Alderman Ted Groudi. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. It's a motion for item four. Yes. Oops, sorry.
To Dan Kapinski, to the Committee on Aging, for a term of 6/1923 to 2/1 of '26.
Is there a second? And just for everyone's knowledge, Dan is our cameraman back there in the corner, and since he retired recently, he's been a big participant at the Senior Center, and we asked him if he would like to join the board. So seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Congratulations, Dan.
Did he put himself on camera?
Probably not. Item O is public comments. Is there anyone who has public comments this evening? Go for it. Turn up.
There you go. All right, Eli Wickman, 710th Street, and I've been just kind of sitting back here fuming. But first, I do want to point out, when you're talking about raises and any pay increases, if you, if the rate does not match the rate of inflation, it's actually a pay cut. So just something to keep in mind for the future when you're discussing these things. But I've been sitting here based on a comment made by somebody else in the public about, you know, the direction of where Manasha is going. And I couldn't disagree more. But what really irked me was the fact that somehow owning a house makes you better than the average renter, and somehow makes you more a part of the community than other people. That's not the case. Congratulations. You could buy a house for $80,000 with five bedrooms and three baths. That's not the case anymore. Times have changed. The city, since I've moved here a decade ago now, is dramatically different in just about every standard that I can measure it by. about every standard that I can measure it by. And I think we need to end with a little positivity about how good this body and the mayor and all the others who have, like, sat here have improved in just a decade. And I really, really, really want to reiterate that in a landlocked city, the only way you're going to increase population is through renters, through affordable housing or high-end housing or any kind of renting at all. So Manashe needs renters, and they shouldn't be talked down on in the way that they have been, as having been a renter here for nine years. So I just want to say, good job. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening?
Moving into committees or...
So we, we didn't, we didn't notice this the way we normally would notice it, but we can go into closed session if you wish. We don't have to go into closed session.
Or we can recess.
That's what I was going to say, can we just recess even though it's not...
It's not on the agenda, so...
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, so we could, we could go, we could go into the other room and do the closed session if you'd like, and then we'll come back to, to the other committee meetings. Or we can do it in open session, either way.
All right. Well, then, if you want us to move into closed session, I guess I'll make that motion.
Unfortunately, I have to read the whole thing.
Oh, yeah. So Mayor, at this time, I, yeah, that we adjourned to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five parent one parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding property acquisition, specifically in this case, Ninety Broad Street. This is parcel two dash zero zero two seven nine dash zero zero, and two dash zero zero two seven nine dash zero three, and two dash zero zero two seven nine dash zero two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Some motion, a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight, zero.
So what we're going to do is we're going to meet in the back room in closed session, and once we're finished with the closed session, we'll come back to this room. If we want to make a motion, we can do so in open session, or we may come back just to adjourn. So we are back from closed session. We do not have any motions to make at this point, so I would just look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh Fox City's campus assists the City of Manashe with video recordings of city meetings. Manashe residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. To express opinions about City of Manashe issues or these broadcasts, contact the mayor's office, nine two zero nine six seven three six zero eight. Contact a city alderman. Contact information appears on the website. Or complete the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.